Councilwoman Noonan will offer a prayer and Councilman Burns will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
At this time, I would really like you all to take in prayers and remember Rosie DePito, who worked for us, and one of our councilmen, his father, Andrew Godano. These are very lovely people. Keep in your hearts and your prayers. This is a very sad time. Life is very fast. It goes faster than we know. We have to remember these people and our military. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the US with liberty and justice for all.
(noise) We're not going to be here. It's Veterans Day, but remember our servicemen and the great job they did this week and they continue. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilman Bakion?
Here.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Here.
Councilman Godano is absent this evening. Councilman Buscio?
Here.
Council President Bruce?
Present. Discussion by Administration.
Item 4A is a cancellation of 100 percent disabled veterans. There are six different properties totaling $7,991.45 worth of taxes that are being purged from the system, and that is on the agenda, numbers 14.1 through 14.6.
Thanks, Fred. And Council President, if I can, I just want to say that first item is clearly one that generally the mayor would address, and as you know, we usually split up the items what we think is appropriately. We'll be taking, Fred and I will be taking all the items tonight because of Rosalie's wake, the mayor, they've been a longtime friend. I think he went to school with her kids and anyway, so he was not going to attend the meeting and wanted to make sure that you knew why. So, item B are three grant applications. They're on the official agenda as items 14.7 through 14.9. Two of them are identical grants, but one from the 2018 round and one from the 2019 round, and these are grants whereby through the New Jersey DOT, we could possibly receive funding for, well, they actually give you a bus if you're successful. So it will be a second bus to supplement the two that we have already at Recreation and/or take care of maintenance on the buses. And the third one is for freight impact study. I want to thank our police department. Often work that's done in preparation for these has to be done by professionals for traffic study, and Lieutenant Roth in our Traffic Division was able to do that in-house, and the statistics showed up in the area that would warrant the grant. So that grant is for improvements to Hickory as a freight route.
Item C is the 2019 calendar year best practices. I'm going to yield to Councilman John Bakion as a final chair when he has his speaking later, but I will say that there are a number of additional categories this year in the best practices, and we did well, but I'll let Councilman Bakion speak to that. Item D is the adopting of a current fund surplus policy, balance policy. This again is something that is a consideration of the best practices, which gives us additional points. We have always had in the past a current fund surplus balance policy, but an informal one. This formalizes that policy so we can rack up a few additional points on the best practices. And that is on the official agenda, number 4.10. Item 4E is authorizing requests for proposals for 2020 professional services. As councilor recall, we do this annually. This is for professionals which are considered for, which would be in consideration for appointment at the January reorganization meeting. This gives authorization to advertise and receive requests for proposals for 2020 professional services. It will be posted if council votes for this resolution this evening tomorrow. They will be in the newspaper by Thursday, and they will be due by November 19th for review and consideration. And that is on the official agenda, number 14.11. Item 4F is again, it kind of coincides with the best practices, and what the best practices call for is a financial review of every one of the authorities, and we have three authorities in the municipality for fiscal stability, and that was done this year as it is done every year, except this year we actually get points for doing something we've done all along.
Thanks, Fred. Item G is authorizing a refund to Russell and Ashley Pedrick for block 902, lot 17.01. It's a refund of $100 for a flood review, and as it turned out, once it went in for review, they realized right away that it was not, we realized, the administration, that it was not on, in a flood zone. So there was no reason to do the review, and rather than just keeping the money, we're going to ask you to authorize to refund it. And it's on the official agenda as item number 14.12. Letter 4H is authorizing the submission of an application and related documents by the township engineer for a grant through the 2019 Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. This one, unlike most of the grants that we do when we're applying for funding or something for township use, this is one for, I think it's 13, Lauren, elevation of, I think, 13 homes. And we were successful a few years back in getting one where we make the application and do the administering of it, but actual property owners in Berkeley get to get the grant funds to elevate their homes. And that one is on the official agenda as item number 14.13. Letter 4I is offering the authorization to offer for sale some land. These are undersized lots owned by the township in which we believe the contiguous owners may have an interest. The resolution just authorizes us to put it out there. If one or more contiguous property owners are willing to pay at least the assessed value, then it could be sold to them, and it has to be adjoined to their property, so it's not a separate building lot. And if I can ask a question of the attorney, the gentleman that you had me speak to at the beginning, I found some old emails where another, a third one had been lost in the shuffle and was expected and authorized to be on the agenda tonight but was not, and I have the block and lots for the property and the street that it's on, but I do not know the assessed value. Is it possible to still do it as an add-on to, you know, authorize that one, or how would, could it be done?
It can be authorized because all we're doing is offering it for sale.
Right.
But it's going to have to specify in the resolution that it shall be offered at the assessed value, and then I should be able to get the value from the assessor tomorrow and take care of all that.
That would be perfect. So if we, having discussed it here, can it just be added on as an additional resolution tonight?
Yes, I just need the block and lot information, please.
Okay, so the property in question that they're looking for the township to sell is block 30, lots 63 and 64.
Okay.
And it's on First Avenue.
First Avenue, okay.
In Manhattan.
That'll be an add-on after the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Thank you.
We're not adding it yet.
I'm sorry, when I say next meeting, I mean the regular, official.
The official, yeah. Thank you. Letter 4J is amending an HVAC contract for the maintenance repair of our HVAC systems. It was to Stanley Bortnowsky &amp; Sons, Inc., doing business as industrial services company. It's on the official agenda as 14.26, and it was awarded, I think, at the last meeting and, or maybe the one before, and it, this is just an agreeable situation where both the township and the person who got the award are, it was initially a two-year contract with a two-year option, and this amendment would simply make it just a one-year contract because the township would like to be able to amend the specifications and go back out next year.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think it doesn't work. I know we're short on maintenance staff and HVAC people. When we prepare this bid, if I could sit with you and maybe we could address belts and filters on all the rooftop units.
That would be great.
And we'll make sure they're serviced and, you know, done for the spring.
More specificity in the bid is exactly what we're looking for, so.
Yeah, thank you.
We just couldn't find anybody with the kind of expertise and knowledge, but now that I know you're available, that's perfect.
They're rare.
Thank you. Letter 4K is authorizing the refund of funds for cancellation of an exercise class. It's on the official agenda as 4.23, and a couple people signed up for a class we were going to offer, and then we didn't, did not get enough participation, so the class had to be canceled, and we're asking to refund the money.
Did you have that last meeting?
There was two other ones, I think, at the last meeting for two other proposed classes that didn't work out.
All right.
Thank you.
You're on L, right?
Yeah, and L, again, I apologize, that's one the mayor was going to take. It's authorizing the partial payment plan for added assessment on block 4.163, lot 51. And this is a situation where a person was, had an added assessment, and because they had difficulty in paying it all at once, they understood that they had to be paid, but if you will authorize it, then the tax collector can make a payment plan where the person can do it, and that's what this would do. It's on the official as 14.27. And letter M is supporting the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust's request to acquire certain property located in Berkeley Township. That property being block 1134, lots 50 through 58. It's on the official agenda as item number 14.24. This one is on Lewis Avenue off of Milk Creek, and as you know, anytime there's, especially environmentally sensitive areas, properties that either the township initiates, or the property owner initiates, or somebody from the Ocean County Natural Land Trust spots as land near theirs, they like to make that purchase. It does take it off the tax rolls once the county owns it, but you know, I know the administration has and the council has wanted to preserve as much land as they can, and this is one that seems well-suited for that. Thank you.
Item N is payment claim certifications. This comes from a new regulations that came out from the legislature through the Division of Local Government Services for adoption of new regulations on electronic transfer, funds transfer, and claimant certifications. What this does, it doesn't, requires signatures on certain invoices for certain capital projects, certain grant-related spending, certain engineering or legal services or professional services. There's a change to the New Jersey Administrative Code for this, and I think the real reason why it expedites the processing of payments to conform to the 30-day local public contracts law in paying contractors within a 30-day period. The law recognizes that when you enter into contracts, there are contracts that are signed, there are signatures are filed. When an engineering project is done, say for road paving, the engineer has to sign off on a certification, the contractor also has to sign off on certifications as well, so it's really just duplicity, and it just expedites payments. And that is on the official agenda, number 14.28.
Thank you. Is that over? It's okay. All right. Just a little more.
Okay, comments from the mayor and council. Again, the mayor cannot be here tonight due to the untimely passing of a friend of all of ours, so we'll begin with the council. Councilman Bakion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Directing the council's attention back to item 4C, the best practices. There were 14 categories in this year's best practice. Berkeley Township needed a score of 30, not to jeopardize our state aid funding, which could have been a loss of $212,823.25. However, due to good, financially prudent practices in all 14 categories, Berkeley scored 41 and a half points, which secures the state aid of, again, $212,823.25. This year's best practices covered a much larger range of categories than in the past years. Not only did we do very well, but we exceeded the state's expectations. The score exceeding the minimum score, again, secures the fact that we will get the state aid this year. I want to talk about another subject that I find should be addressed on this council, so I want to bring it to my colleagues' attention. Recently, Governor Murphy executed an executive order creating a multi-departmental electronic smoking device task force, which I applaud him for, and I think that we can support his efforts in this investigative work regarding vaping. Vaping is done more so with people under the age, according to statistics, under the age of 34 years than the older people. There's not enough data on vaping as of yet to determine whether or not it is a cancer-related subject, but it does cause harm. There have been, according to the Wall Street Journal, so far to date, there have been 1,604 cases of vaping-related illnesses. 34 people have died due to vaping. So I think it's something that this council can do along with Governor Murphy and sort of like support his efforts in going deep on this vaping issue and doing this investigation so that possibly, if found harmful, or more harmful than they already know, it would be banned. So I'd like to make a motion for resolution supporting Governor Murphy's efforts.
I'll second that.
To cancel this vaping.
Okay, first and second. All right, roll call, please, on the motion.
Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Buscio?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?
Yes.
Thank you, council. So that would be something that Beverly, you'll send up to the state, I would assume.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, President.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Good evening, everyone. I didn't do that.
What's going on here, Karen?
I don't know. Try it again. I'm first going to read a notice, the Berkeley Township Annual Free Rabies Vaccination Clinic, Saturday, November 16, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Bayville First Aid Squad Building located on the corner of Station Road and Route 9. Please bring proof of prior rabies vaccinations for a three-year vaccination. If no proof is provided, a one-year vaccination certificate will be issued. Licenses will not be sold. Funding for the event comes from dog and cat licensing only. And I would just like to say, last Friday, we had the food bank. We had a tremendous turnout of people. I would say close to 150 people came, which was really a lot of people. We were very happy to see that people are finally helping themselves get the help through the food bank, which is sponsored by our council and mayor. The next food bank will be November 22nd, and we are taking, that's for the food bank, and we are taking orders for Thanksgiving dinners. Please contact me if you would like to receive a dinner to be given out. They will be dispersed on November 27th on a Wednesday at the Manitow Firehouse on Fort de France. So far, I have 80 people that have signed up for the dinners. They're very nicely done by the Ocean County Culinary School. So if you're interested, or if you know someone that's a shut-in and they would like to get a nice dinner for themselves, we're there to do it. So please contact me. And that's really all I have. Thank you very much, and see you next time.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
This past week with the Northeastern we had for a few days, the flooding in the area, you know, of course, around the bay, has been worse since Sandy. And I don't know, I know they're doing some drainage work on Longview and some Main Street End, they did some drainage work there, but we're really going to have to look into raising some streets in the future. People can't get down to their houses. CNC Marina couldn't open this weekend. They couldn't get down that street, but you know, they're, we're either going to have to do something or, like Councilman Bakion, with the county Green Acres, maybe they could buy some out, but the problem is there, some of them seem to be, like CNC Marina, is worth a little more than what it is assessed, and I know the county only gives assessed value. So, you know, they would have to take a beating there, but you know, in the meantime, they're taking a beating when they can't get down there. There's been some rumble around, I only caught on this week, I've been out for a couple of weeks, but about some new developments going up or whatever. Anybody has the right to make an application to the planning board or whatever. It's what happens after that point. So, you know, nothing happens until it goes through planning board and council. So, you know, as you hear rumbling, you know, they're going to build 100 here and 200 there. You know, pay attention and, you know, keep in touch with the planning board, and you know, you just come to those meetings, and that's where, you know, your voice should be heard, but you can't deprive anybody of applications. That's why we're going on with this adjacent land sales. In the past administrations, they've bought up small lots, and then they've parleyed them together, and it seems like every Board of Adjustments, there's somebody coming in with a builder with an undersized lot. And if you look at that, and they come in with two, two and a half, three kids, you know, that's costing us almost a half a million dollars in education where we can sell off these undersized lots to adjacent property owners and enhance their properties plus get them back on the tax roll. So, you know, you need to pay attention to that. Also, Airbnbs. I know there's a five-bedroom one just opened up on my street and a few along Pine. And of course, when somebody's going to rent a place for the weekend or the week during the summer, it's going to be a party house. And that's what was happening on a couple of them. They come in, party, they leave, another party comes in, and some of the owners live out of state. The one on Pine, they actually live in Colorado. They don't even know what's going on there. But I know I did talk to the attorney about if we could limit to 30-day rentals, but on the other hand, it would impact, you know, some of the ocean fronts and those areas. So we really need to sit down with the attorney and administrator and see what areas we could designate as maybe soft residential or commercial, whatever.
If I can, through the chair, Council President Gross also heads up the Legislative Committee, and that's definitely an item, agenda item for our next legislative meeting, hopefully maybe even to get some thing before you guys in November, December, so that we're ready for next year or early next year.
And we're fortunate, we have an animal house rule, so if a landlord has this party going on one weekend, don't be shy. Call the police, that's what they're there for. They'll come, check the place out next weekend. Before you know it, by July 4th, the landlord can't rent it out anymore.
I just, I'm sorry, I just have to clarify one thing. An air, the use of property by Airbnbs or as an Airbnb does not make it a commercial use. So I know you just said soft residential versus commercial, you're...
That was my turn.
I know, I'm just explaining so that nobody thinks that that's the way it actually is. It's not, it's still a residential use, but we will discuss and see what we can do to try to address the concerns.
The attorney and I went a little round and round with this before, that I'm always looking for some way to get out of it, and you really can't deprive somebody of making money on their house, and it's no different than a real estate sign being out there and renting it out. You know, I thought maybe it was like Airbnb would be like a business, couldn't operate in a residential, but she keeps me a little, a little straight. November 1st, there's going to be a memorial service out front here for Allison at 4 o'clock, I think, November 1st, right?
I believe it's...
Yeah, okay. Yesterday, our...
Joseph Dale, Lieutenant Allison Ray of the Berkeley Township Police Department, who passed away.
Was it Allison?
Two.
Two of you.
Wow. Thank you, Jim, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Yesterday, our 10-year-old football cheerleaders in Trenton, they won the first place in the state, so here we go again. The mayor will have them out here, and you know, what's Trump say, you never get tired of winning? And I noticed on the agenda, there's some decreases in some change orders. I know the sports building, the roof is leaking, you know, pretty bad out there for the last couple of years. I don't know if that money could be sent over that way, or if you have plans on doing that. Also, the demos, we still have houses that haven't been opened up since Sandy. This week with the storms, a couple of them had more than one, two feet of water in them. They really need to be torn down, and some of them are bank-owned. And what's happening is, last week, there was one on Teakwood that went for foreclosure, and the bank bids, and the foreclosure was going for 190, and as the bank is bidding, she goes, it's real soft tone, 175, 180, and then when she gets what the bank will let it up for, she'll go 195, and then the bank winds up having it back again. So, you know, there's got to be something there that we can, I know we have double fines for banks, bank-owned property, so we need to get them to pay attention. And as far as the VA in Bricktown, they just hired three new primary doctors, so if any vets, you know, over Holiday City or over there that don't know who their primary doctor is, they need to get over there, and I know I brought a couple vets down here this week, and they all got their new primaries and their appointments, so I know they were short doctors, so if anybody gets down here, tell them to find out who their new primary is or give the office a call here, and I'll leave the number to get in touch. And one more thing, the nature building out there, Peggy's here tonight, they purchased a shed, and I guess we need to meet up with Spurber or Styler to see where to put it. And our Ralph buildings are insured separately or in the package?
With the blankets.
Okay. All right, and that's all, but remember our vets for Veterans Day. Thank you, vet, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes, thank you. Just a follow-up on the S-2425, and that has not come for a vote yet, that Assembly bill, so we're waiting on that. I'm hoping this month it'll either be changed or dropped. We do not know yet, just to give an update on that. I have a couple questions, one for engineering. On Sherwood, that road was done a while ago, and it was very bad. It was underneath, there was no dirt, they had to fill it in. I don't know if you remember that road, Ernie? I don't know if it was of your time. Well, now, it's like sinking, and this was not an old road, and a crack all the way down the middle of the road, so if somebody could look at it just to see what's going on. And also a reminder on Edgwick Drive North and South, they're still, I don't know where they're going to go on our list, they are really bad. Now, I have a couple questions about the Recreation Department. I know that when we have to vote on, anytime we do any rate changes, like get the golf or anything like that, this is just a kind of an open question. If the recreation wants to change or charge on the bus or the people who come for their little parties, is there someone that they should be telling that to, or do they make their own decision on that?
The rates for recreation were just last year.
Like, you know, we have a $10 thing for the bus, and if they want to charge people to get on the bus, if someone decides to do that, do they have to come to the council for anything like that to change over there?
As you correctly stated at the beginning, all the rates that any township department's charge have to be set by ordinance. Some of them have an ordinance that says there's a range, and they could be then set by resolution when they get the exact place. But long story short, they have to be set by ordinance, some of them have some flexibility in them in what they charge, but if they're changing, they can't, cannot charge any rate that's not authorized by an ordinance.
Well, like, I mean, like, they have a party at, because I was at the recreation the other day, and something came up, like, we're having, they have the Halloween parties, and if someone in there decides, well, we want to charge the seniors money for that party, should that come to the council? Is she allowed to do that on her own?
They would be allowed to do it if there's a rate that says, like, if I remember correctly, recreation might have a catch-all one that says any events not named can be a $10 charge or something like that. So, I can't answer unless I notice specific.
All right. I had an incident where a gentleman lives in Bayville and he owns his house and he pays taxes. His mother visits with him a couple of months out of the year. She was at a party and because she doesn't live here, but her son pays taxes, they told her she couldn't come and couldn't go on the trip. I just wondered, what is the actual rule? I think that's kinda cruel to do that. Generally pays taxes, lives in Bayville, and she was told she couldn't come. She paid the $10 for the trip.
And we heard, I heard several stories about that situation. The owner of the property said exactly what you said, that his mother lives with him. He actually said she lives with him, which would make her a resident here and she'd be fully entitled to go on the trip. It seemed, or, yeah, to sign up for the bus trips. It seems like there was some conflicting information.
She was crying.
And long story short, at the end of the day, we told recreation and they said that's what they've been doing. It's not about that you have to own a property or that you have to pay taxes, you just have to be a resident and therefore what they generally ask for is a driver's license that shows that. And that seemed like a reasonable way to do it. That particular case, there was some, my recollection is that they actually took the fee and then something that the woman put on the application was conflicting that showed that she didn't live there, she may have given a different address. And then they said, oh, here, you can have your fee back, like, because it was never-
Yeah, but if, I feel that the son lives here and pays taxes and she does visit with him and lives there, I just felt that that was not handled properly.
Yep. There's always sometimes more difficult situations, but conversely, we certainly can't have and don't want people that don't, that are not Berkeley residents to be able to take advantage because these things are underpriced. We don't, they cost us money to do it, the $10 for the whole season of bus trips. We would not want to open that up to people from other municipalities.
Well, let's get back to that bus. I was at a meeting a couple of years ago over in South Seaside Park and you had a general, everybody was there and you were there, the mayor was there. You never had a bus from the recreation go to South Seaside Park or Manitow Park.
We never had, we never had the, those two destinations set as regular stops where the bus went. What they put out on the literature back then and should continue to be putting out, which I believe they do, is that anybody who needs a pickup from anywhere in Berkeley Township just needs to let recreation know. Like, we wouldn't drive to South Seaside Park just to see if there's anybody-
Well, no, but I mean, if they wanna go and they-
If they wanna go, we will go there.
And they pay the $10. And Manitow, because Manitow was never mentioned. It was brought up to me that, so if they give the money and they go on the trip, they will go to South Seaside Park. Would you have a destination in South Seaside Park?
And Manitow, yep. And again, I think they would make it-
Well, Manitow could be the church.
Yeah. But yes, we will go to any place in Berkeley Township. It's just that the regular stops would have been the cluckasses.
So, I would have to tell them, make sure that they give their money.
Just call recreation and let them know.
It starts again in January, I mean, it's only here, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
As we stated earlier, Councilman Gudano cannot make it, so we will move to Council Vice President Bush. I had planned to discuss vaping, but Councilman Bakion did such a nice job covering that, so I do not have anything additional at this point. Okay, sir. Most of my issues were covered, except I just did want to add that our first food truck, fire pit event, when I say event, we had four of them, went very well at no cost to the taxpayers whatsoever. And I believe we even yielded a small income from it. I'm not sure what the numbers are, but it was a good time by everyone and we're planning on adding it to the summer concert series next year. Kicking around the idea of apropos of what we were talking about before, maybe the rec buses can go to the senior communities and help out with transportation so everybody has a chance to get there. It was held at Veterans Park, it was a good time, good food, good entertainment. And that's it. All right, moving right along.
You've done a great job with that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It wasn't publicized enough, there would have been thousands more, I think it would have been publicized more, it would be 6,000, right?
Our first night, 12, 12 to 1,400 people maybe, but then it started to taper off. So, we'll tweak things next year to make it even better.
It was excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right. And yes, I do dress myself, someone asked me, so. Yeah. Okay, discussion by township clerk.
Engineer.
I'm sorry, engineer completely skipped that.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. 6A is the authorization to advertise and receive bids for the resurfacing of Garrett Road, which is on the official agenda as item 14.16. 6B is the authorization, authorizing a contract change order to Johnson Baron Corp. for the various road improvement project, which is a decrease of some $4,700 from the original amount, which is on the official agenda as item 14.17. 6C is authorizing the release for the performance guarantees at River Bay Landings, which is on the official agenda as item 14.18. 6D is authorizing the release of the performance guarantees for the various road improvement project, which is on the official agenda as item 14.19. E is authorizing a contract change order for innovative electric contracting for the HMGP Police Station and Administration Project, which is a net decrease of $11,000, which is on the official agenda as item 14.20. 6F is the authorization to release the performance guarantee for the innovative electric contracting, which is on the official agenda as item 14.21. And lastly, 6G is the authorizing, authorization for the release of the performance guarantees posted by Quality Electric Construction for the Veterans Park Field Lighting Project, which is on the official agenda as item 14.22.
Thank you, Mr. President. 7A, discussion by township clerk.
We have one fireman appointment tonight for James G. Copley III, and he's being appointed to the Bayville Fire Company. The backgrounds were checked and everything is good. And that's on the official item 14.25.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. Meeting's now open for public comments. We ask when you approach, name and address, please, and keep your comments to five minutes. Mr. Callahan, you're first.
You missed a camera. About four or five weeks ago, your Department of Public Works did a paving job over in 20th. What are you gonna do to remedy that situation?
I appreciate your bringing that to our attention back when it was done. There were issues with the job and once we became aware of it, we had the township engineer go take a look so that we could determine if and when we would take corrective action. At this point in time, we've decided that we're not gonna take any action till the spring. We're gonna let it go through this winter and then see what needs to be done to make the job better.
I think that's wrong. You're gonna wait this for the freeze door cycle to go by there. It's spalling now. Well, it's gonna get progressively worse. You got 10, 12 thousand dollars sitting here. By the spring, it's gonna be shot. So, anyway, seal the joints like I said before, seal everything. Then possibly, think about putting some sealant, like a driveway seal or some other thing. You have areas there where it's just spalling, you can go with your shoe there and don't let-
Through the chair, Council President? I was out there with Alan and we were talking about doing some milling and some replacement there.
Yeah, and if sealing the joints, we'll have another look and definitely see if there's, if it's more important to get something done sooner rather than later.
What's more important, don't let it go through the freeze source cycles. They didn't put tack coat on, which was another mistake.
Right.
I mean, why are you taking, letting that deer go and, you know, as I said, 10, 12 thousand dollars, just go.
Yep.
Please.
Thank you.
Now, next one. I think it's on the northwest corner of 21st and Central. The 21st, John, where the, they put that new pipe in?
Yeah.
Put a new, about three weeks ago, they put a new pipe, removed the sidewalk and a, three weeks, all is now is they backfill it and it's done nothing. So, now you have the sidewalk, you know, with the tape taped off there.
And again, hate to keep saying it, but thank you, you are our eyes over there. You had let me know because there was a concern that they might have been doing actual road work. If you remember, you had called me, so I checked with the engineer right away on that one. He informed me that the, it was this drainage pipe project that was being done and that we were certainly not repaving that road, which didn't need it, like you pointed out. And I, so I can let our township engineer answer, but I know that often they backfill and leave it a little while before they do the repair to avoid settling, but Ernie may know more about that.
I understand that, but that's what they make the pactists for, too. Now, what's, what's gonna happen?
Fair enough. First off, I'll have someone out there tomorrow morning. The trench installation gets done by one crew and the finish work gets done by another. So, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but Alan or I'll find out and one of us will give you a call in the morning.
Doesn't have to be immediately, but I just, before you forget, it'd be nice to have the sidewalk placed prior to freezing weather.
Again, the contractor that has the project for the entire town for that sends out one crew to do pipe work and one crew to do flat work. I'll find the schedule out and I'll let you know.
Okay. Is that 21st and Central?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in case if anybody has any questions there, have a look at 24th or some of the other paving jobs and please, don't let your crew do any paving anywhere close to that place. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, sir. I did pronounce that correct, right? Is that a S? All right. Name and address, please.
Ambrose Clancy, 87 Charles Street, Bayville. I have a question for Mr. Burns. I lost my street access to Floral Street. You were gonna look at it at our last meeting, did you ever look at it?
I don't think I got over to Floral. I looked at the first left going down Circuit 2. Over by there. And I noticed, you know, there's some work over there and I gave it to a code. It was over there by Vince, the sign guy. Yeah, he's right across the street.
Yeah. Well, that's not the road I'm talking about.
Well, that one's got problems.
That's another, that's another issue. But Floral Street, it's like, when you first go in and you go around the bend, it's straight through. I lost access to it. My neighbor took, made it a lawn, he put a row of cut pilings all along a wall and I have to get in there to cut, cut trees down and I don't have access and it should be a street. It's supposed to be a street, it fronts that house.
Yeah, I'll get by there in the morning, but I did look at that other one, that mess over there.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole big, we're working on that.
Yep. And through the chair, if you let me know and you want, I'd take a ride over with you because it's kinda new to me, the dealing with these paper streets that are out in woods and some people have utilized, so there's a couple of things in the area that I could show you and that I'm sure you could show me, I'd go with you.
Yeah, right after the 9 o'clock church.
One more thing. I had called the police about when he dumped a whole load of logs there and he claims that that's his property. And he says, you should get the town engineer, see Kenny, Kenny Anderson, arrange it with him to make sure that that's the street, not, not his lawn.
I have the town tax maps with me.
Yes.
Just look at them, I can tell whose it is.
And I'll be there if you, you know, if I know you're there, I'll, you know, help you.
Yeah, probably about 10:30 after I go to Rosalie's church service.
When would that be? Tomorrow?
Yeah, about 10:30.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Richard Pallador? If I butcher your names, let me know, it's not my intention.
You said it right, Richard Pallador.
Yes, sir.
East, 46 Hyanna Street, I'm over in Carefree in Holiday City. Evening, everyone. I'm here about feeding the animals. If you read, now, this is all I have, is the ordinance, it's in our Carefree booklet. And it says at the end that, well, first of all, it says you shouldn't place anything outside to attract the animals and there is an exception for bird seed to feed the birds. Well, my neighborhood was like living in a petting zoo. I had so many people, I made the mistake of going to them and telling them I was gonna report them if they didn't stop doing it. Didn't make many friends. I had to report them to the town, to the clubhouse, half of them stopped. I didn't want people to get in trouble, so I went to the Office of Animal Control and said, these people aren't responding, can you go out and tell them, please, stop doing it? So, they went out there and it seemed like everybody stopped. And then all of a sudden, they started again. And I called the animal control and what they're doing now was they're hanging bird feeders this high and they're throwing bird seed because animal control told them it's okay to feed bird seed.
We're speaking of deer.
We're speaking of deer. They're feeding, they're attracting the deer using bird seed.
Why?
Because the lady at the animal, her name is Diane, she's a wonderful lady, but she was on the job when it was legal to feed the deer and now she's on the job when it's not legal to feed the deer. And she's very sympathetic, she tells me point-blank that, you know, she feels for these people, this is all they have. I personally have leukemia and last year I had to be hospitalized, I had to be treated in the infusion room for a sinus infection. So, you can understand I'm a little sensitive to piles of deer crap all over my property and the ticks and the green flies and everything else. And right now, they're actually laughing and they've got bird feeders hanging this high with the bird seed with the express intent of feeding the deer.
Perfect height for that.
And they're sprinkling on the ground and I'm kinda laughing because now they're attracting geese, too. So, I don't think they're too happy about what they've done. So, I just want you guys to know that. And I also want you to know I was zoning and planning board chairman up in Garwood, New Jersey, and we once had a meeting where, believe it or not, a deed restriction. It was a legal lot, it was a 10,000 square foot lot and a developer wanted to tear the house down and build two. And we had to have this raucous meeting with everybody in town, was furious because they didn't want to lose this property. And until we finally determined that, you know, there was subsequent act, we couldn't understand the deed. Believe it or not, it was written in English by lawyers and we couldn't understand it. And I'm just saying that maybe if you don't want bird seed fed the deer, that maybe you better readdress. Because as of right now, Diane is telling everyone that they can feed the deer.
Through the chair.
That's ordinance, but they can also handle it.
Yeah, president, through the chair. What address is the house that is feeding the bird, the animal?
Well, there's several of them. I live at 46.
You're at 46?
My next-door neighbor's feeding deer, two doors away are feeding deer.
Are the numbers going up or going down?
They're going up, 52, around the corner. But if you go out there, you'll see, you'll see-
Did you file a complaint with the Carefree?
Yes.
Okay, and what happened with that?
Well, you know, I think they sent them letters.
They did.
And then I went with, I actually took a video with my phone, caught the lady doing it, she's screaming at me. And then, of course, the police showed up because they filed harassment charges that I'm harassing them, you know. And the police showed up, Sean Bowman, great, nice kid, nice kid.
Bowens, yes.
Bowens, Bowens.
Yep.
And he told me, take all the pictures you want, call them. And I went to call them, but I couldn't get through, so the only access I have is animal control. And anyway, the, you asked a question, the clubhouse, I think they've talked to the animal control because he's changed his mind about, he told me, if you bring me a video, I'll be there with animal control and a police officer and I'll hand them the summons myself. And I showed up with it and he said, no, you have to go through mitigation. They're telling me that if, first of all, they won't file a summons.
I'll contact the office tomorrow and find out exactly what they've done and then from there, they sent letters and they're not adhering to the letters, then we'll have the attorney get involved. It'll go, it'll go further, we'll take care of it.
The big thing right now is, is you guys have to make a decision, did you intend for deer, for bird seed to be exempt, that you were gonna attract any animals you wanted?
And at every homeowners' meeting that I've gone to and Diane was there, she stated very, very adamantly, do not feed the animals with anything. So, for her to say-
She told me specifically that bird seed is exempt.
Well, maybe we have to change that.
That's exactly it.
We can add this to the agenda as the administrator mentioned before, we do have an agenda meeting coming up in November, so, I mean, not an agenda, legislative meeting.
You know, I know how it works. I was on the school board, I was the planning board and zoning board chairman for five years, so I know how frustrating, how slow things are. But I've been doing this for three months and I'm now getting laughed at, they're waving the bird seed, look what I got, look what I got. Because they've been told they can just spread it all over. You don't know how happy I am that the, the geese are pooping all over the property right now.
So, so hopefully we'll, so hopefully we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for the update.
Have a good night.
And through the chair, if I could just ask from our end, if we do end up doing some legislation, if the attorney could please write something that is not open to interpretation, clear, that any person could understand, and won't have people arguing over the language, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
You know, and can I just-
Just ask me for my interpretation, and you'll be fine.
And, and the thing about bird feeders, if you put them down this high, you know, I don't, you know, birds have wings, they go up in the air, and the animals that don't have wings enjoy things that are down this low, so maybe you think about that, too.
Thank you.
May I just go to the chair for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
This was an issue that was brought up, and actually went to the state of New Jersey, did clarification, and a hard time to get this ruling against feeding the deer. Carefree is not the only one. A lot of people have complained, all the way over to Bayhead, up north, about the deer. And people don't seem to realize, they walk through the streets, they hit the deer. A lot of people, it's a 50/50 thing, don't feed the deer. I'm one of those people that really push for it, and people, and then the hunters come in. So this is a very serious issue with the deer.
You, you drive around that area, and it's as if they're socialized to people, they're not afraid of people, which is, it's bizarre if you're not used to it.
Come on, I can talk some more about it.
No, we're good, thanks. Nah, nah, we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna assist you with it.
I can tell you all the details.
I believe it, sir, you live it. Ben Watson?
Thank you.
All right, name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Ben Watson, it's Five Morning Star. I'm here in regards of a street name change. That went from Morning Star to New Beginning Way. I'm here to change it back.
Good morning.
I'm Ray Force.
We, I think you all received the letter.
Yeah, yeah, my attorney received the letter, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we'll be discussing it. I, so the council did receive a letter, I received a letter as well, administration received it. We are in the process of considering this, I think when I discussed with you on the phone a couple of weeks ago. It is gonna be sent to the legislative committee, because they're the ones that would make the change, but the council as a whole will be discussing it as well. There is no action that's on for tonight, because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay, no, that's fine, but they have their own private entrance, so they have their own cul-de-sac. So to, you know, to have the church representing my street is like, not okay.
They, as I said, they have the letter, I think we're, um, at the, one of, at the committee meeting, we are going to actually look at the way it's all laid out, and gonna have, we will have the discussion to, to see how it's gonna be, you know, how we're gonna address it moving forward.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Laura Shaw? Good evening.
Laura Shaw, 407 Bay Boulevard, beautiful Holly Park, Bayville, New Jersey. I had a question about this handy little dandy that I got at Community Pride Day. A little flashlight, very cute. It says on it, "Clean community," Mayor Carmen Amato. I, I got this at a table full of goodies on Community Pride Day, I thought it was a neat little gizmo, and I asked the people, "Who paid for this?"
I didn't see that.
I'll give it to, I'll give it to you when I'm done, Tom. You can have it. I asked the lady at the table, "Who paid for this stuff?", and she said, "We got a grant for that." Okay? And since it says "clean community" on it, I can only assume that you used Clean Community Grant money for this prog, little piece of, uh, toy? Is that correct? Can anybody answer that?
I believe the Clean Communities money is used for a very variety of items that has, say, Clean Communities on it.
Okay.
I don't remember that flashlight being ordered. In fact, Public Works usually does the ordering, if I'm right, Fred.
That's correct, yeah, it would've been purchased through the Clean Communities grant.
Through the Clean Communities grant? Okay, thank you. That got me curious, so I did a little research, and I saw on WOBM's website, of all places, the New Jersey DEP has awarded Berkeley Township $136,028 on a Clean Communities grant. Mayor Carmen Amato says it will be used to offset the salaries of employees who clean and maintain the parks and beaches, as well as provide funding to nonprofit and civic groups in the Adopt a Spot program. The $136, $28 DEP grant is good news for the taxpayers of Berkeley Township and local nonprofit civic and community groups, Amato said. The township will use a portion of this grant to offset the salaries of employees that clean and maintain our parks and beaches, along with the funding of many grants to local nonprofits, civic, and community groups that take advantage of our Adopt a Spot or Adopt a Road programs. End quote.
Well, I can certainly tell you, if you're questioning that, that that's all true.
Okay.
That the Clean Communities money is used, we hire seasonal employees to do cleanup in the municipality, and we do do a $500 award to nonprofits that wanna do a cleanup of the Adopt a Spot. If in that article, either they didn't print, or the mayor didn't say that we also buy other items that are given out at, you know, community events, then that was missed in that article.
Okay.
But the rest is certainly true. Question?
Fair enough.
Also for promotional, again, for Clean Communities, it's also brought to by rigs, garbage bags, uh, things that go-
Things that actually clean the community. Gotcha.
Exactly, so it may have not been in the article, but if you read the grant guidelines-
Okay, I have the grant guidelines right here, what a coincidence. Okay.
Through the chair. Good. On the Clean Communities, that, like I had mentioned earlier, on the, um, the demos, and, um, any properties that, you know, around Holly Park, or, you know, anywhere in the town, that need some cleaning up, and the properties, we go out there, and they bill the homeowner, or the landlord, they actually bill them for a rental on the mower, rental on the weed whacker, whatever they use, they go out there on a Saturday, or whatever, and then they lean the property.
I, I'm familiar-
So until the township gets the reimbursement from the lean, which would probably be 100 years, you know, they do use that Clean Community money to pay the overtime on the employees.
I'm familiar with that, and I'm all for it. However, in the program requirements, I just wanna read a few items here. Acceptance of the grant should be recognized by inclusion in the community municipal annual budget. Acceptance requires recipients to maintain programs and efforts to utilize funds for the following purposes. Number one, litter cleanup and removal, including the sponsorship of an Adopt a Beach or Adopt a Highway program. Number two, education programs to promote clean communities. Number three, graffiti abatement. Number four, enforcement of local anti-littering laws. Tell me where a flashlight with the mayor's name on it falls into any of those categories, please.
Well, I'm certainly not gonna attempt to argue the, uh, scope of the grant, and based on what you're reading, try to defend it, and if you have, like, legitimate questions to ask, that's great, but if you're gonna stand there and try to, like, imply that something's being done wrong, it, it puts me in an uncomfortable situation, 'cause I've had people imply to me that things were done wrong. I don't wanna see it politicized to the point where you're just talking about the administration for political gain, because there's plenty to talk about, like, let's say, would you think it's ethical or right for a campaign, somebody from one campaign to take signs down from another campaign?
No, and I've addressed that publicly, yes.
You've addressed what?
That, uh-
That you think that's wrong, right?
That it's wrong, yes, absolutely. No, it's a question, and I think it's a legitimate question.
And you, you're saying you think the other thing I brought up you think is wrong, and you guys would not do that?
No, and I would not endorse it either.
Well, I've had people give me proof that it was done, and I don't wanna make this at a council meeting into, like, a political argument, I don't know why-
No, this isn't a political argument, this is public funds, sir.
Through the chair.
Clearly.
I'm just, I, I just wanna say, unfortunately, without a P.O. or any of the, with any of the documents in front of us, we can't really address your, your questions, so-
It says Mayor Carmen Amato, Clean Communities.
I understand that from an event.
And these gentlemen admitted that the money was used.
All right, through the chair.
Well, no, they said it probably was, but not having everything in front of them, I mean, if we have time to look at stuff, then we can address it, but-
I just wanna make sure the money is used as it was intended.
I understand.
As a resident, as a taxpayer, the fact that I'm running for mayor is a, is a side issue. I'm a taxpayer in the town.
No, through the chair.
I'm a taxpayer in the town.
It probably is not a side issue, we're gonna, we're gonna cut this off.
Through the chair, um, when did you get there? Pride Day?
Pride Day, yeah.
You get some recycling bags also?
Um, yeah, an ice pack.
Some pencils, erasers.
An ice pack, some pencils, yeah.
Ice pack.
Yeah, yeah, all with the mayor's name on it, yeah.
When was that?
That was a month ago.
You've been here three meetings since, and now you come up with this?
No, I haven't been here three meetings since, this is my first meeting here since Pride Day, sir.
Like I said, we don't wanna have a, a political debate here.
It's not a political debate, it's a legitimate question.
When you personally go out and tear signs off of a lawn, that's political also, but we're not gonna discuss that, we'll discuss that with the-
That's, that's adorable.
Okay.
All right, can I-
I'm shutting this down.
Is my, is my five minutes up, because I do have another question?
It is, ma'am, thank you.
All right, are you sure? Have, have we been timing that?
We have, ma'am.
'Cause I have a question about the Pine Barrens modelers flying.
Ma'am, I run this meeting, you don't, thank you.
All right.
Yes, you, of course, may come back. Uh, next? Okay. Michelle, would you like to come back for a second time?
Um, one question about-
No, no, wait, one second, before we do, no one else has any? Oh, all right, wait for Mr. McGrath.
Yes, Bill McGrath, 339 Bayview Avenue. This Saturday, we had, oh, approximately 30, 40 maybe, volunteers, the Waterway Advisory Commission members, the local Boy Scout troops, uh, and with, through the auspices of Clean Ocean Action, we had a beach cleanup, uh, over at Dudley Park between the parking lot and the trestle, the trail, uh, that runs from the parking lot to the trestle. I guess it's about 100 yards, maybe, 150 yards. We pulled out, I would say, a whole truckload full of mostly beer cans and beer bottles that were thrown in the woods. I'm sure mostly from underage drinkers in there, and we had, uh, well, two members of Public Works, uh, and, and a truck, and they gave us bags, and I'm sure that, the funding for that comes out of this, what Mr. Shaw was talking about, so, so, I mean, it funds things like that, that we do, to aid the volunteers in, in cleaning up. And I did notice that the county had cleaned up the area around the trestle really well, and I did notice that they, the, they had a video camera, uh, on a tree, I guess it's their video counter. Do you have access to, you have access to that?
If it's through the sheriff's department, we could get access to it, we also have our own-
Yeah, I would try to get access to the video, because, uh, that's where all the underage drinkers are.
Yeah, we're down there frequently.
I know, okay. And, uh, we had suggested also extra, uh, recycling receptacles along the trail. Who knows? You know, they're throwing their beer bottles in 50 feet into the woods, whether or not they would use them, I don't know, but, uh, uh, yeah, that, that's the, some of that money that John spoke about goes to help what we do, aid the volunteers. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Shaw? I'm sure it's gonna be something very positive.
It is.
All right, that'll be nice.
Of course.
Just one more time for the record, please, your name and address.
Laura Shaw, 407 Bay Boulevard, Bayville.
Thank you.
All right, this question is about, um, something I saw on the internet, and I've asked about this at public meetings before. It's a, it's a matter of concern to me as a resident. The Pine Baron modelers fly at the following sites in the southern New Jersey area. I won't read the whole list, I will just say, the Berkeley Veterans Flying Field, located across from the courthouse, Pine Wald Keswick Road, and then there's a few other locations in other towns. Oh, there's Johnson's Pit on Locker Street, it says. Oh, so also another one in Bayville. These sites are accessible only to the Pine Barrens Modeling Club members, due to AMA and club safety regulations. To become a member, please contact the club. This seems to be a private use for public land, and that's a little disturbing to me. I'm wondering how the council feels about this.
I, I can tell you, I can't tell you how the council feels about it. I can tell you that, I forget if it was you or someone else questioned it a while back, we double-checked, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly when it was done, but I believe the council did a resolution authorizing a lease of space.
Or they would've gotten an order.
An ordinance authorizing the lease of the space to the Pine Baron modelers. It seemed like a nice community thing to have use of. We often let, uh, public space be used by private people, picnics, other things, too, for their use.
Sure.
And my understanding is, again, without the lease in front of me, that it is open to, um, other people who wanna fly, to fly, but that they have to contact that group for exactly those reasons of insurance, that they want, don't want some, my, I've never gone out there, but my understanding is some of these planes have a six or eight-foot wingspan. They're big planes, and they try to make sure that they're operating in a safe and insured way.
I'm all for-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm all for people having fun playing with toys, but I think if a Cub Scout troop or somebody wants to use it, it, they should not be restricted from using it.
It only takes a letter.
Their website says, "These sites are accessible only to members, due to AMA and club safety regulations." I'm questioning that because I don't think it's right, for, you know, point blank. I think that it should be open to the public. I don't think a private club should regulate how public land is used.
I, two things, I just wanna clarify, it's right behind, it's on the DPW site, right?
Sure.
Um, I just wasn't, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't like an open park or anything, that we're restricting, you know, certain areas there.
Right, right.
And the other thing is, is if somebody runs into an issue, and they aren't allowed by the club to utilize the property the way that it's supposed to be utilized by the club, they can always contact the town, and the town can intervene, assuming, you know, all the, the right conditions are met, um, you know, then they could go through that course of action.
Through the chair.
Sir.
Yeah, it's, uh, they have the insurance and the safety concerns, you know, they're close to the airport, and, um, I know the legislative committee is working on some drone ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
I've been over Veterans Park, when there's been some games going on, and the parents have drones flying over, and they're racing over here, and it doesn't take much for somebody to cough, and the drone comes and hits a kid, but, uh, if any organization or anybody wants to use any properties, you know, the pavilion or whatever, it just takes a, a letter to the council.
A letter to the council, I think that's great. A letter to the council. I think that's great. But I don't think they should have to ask a private club for permission.
Well, we may have to talk to Mr. Bombardier and say...
That's what I'm saying. They might need to tweak this a little bit, is what I'm saying. Because if you read this, if you had a, you know, model plane or drone, whatever, and you wanted to fly it, and you read that, you'd think, gee, I can't use that. That's restricted.
Yeah, we'll talk to Mr. Bombardier.
All right, that's, that's all I'm saying. Public land is for the public. That's all I was getting at. All right. Well, thank you all. Have a lovely evening.
Anyone else? Mr. McGrath? Name and address again, please.
Yes, Bill McGrath, again. That might be a moot point with Mrs. Shaw, because since that lease of the property, the federal government passed a rule that you cannot fly the drones or remote aircraft within five miles of an airport, and that's within five miles of Miller. So I think that's defunct now, because they're not allowed to fly within five miles of Miller Airport. So it's a moot point.
Doesn't matter.
It's a federal law that just came on within the last year or so with the, with all of these drones. As a matter of fact, a lot of the drone software have, or have, that contain GPS, have GPS blackouts, where they won't even, they can't even operate within, within a, an airport, which is locked in by the GPS, within five miles. So that may be a moot point, which she's talking about.
Our, before, our legal department is requesting you state your address one more time for the record.
339 Bayview Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Callahan, does that hand on the seat mean you're about to rise and address us one more time? Name and address, Mr. Callahan, please.
Red Callahan, 117 Anchor Drive, Chelsea Park. How about the council spend some money and improve this microphone system there?
We thought, for the record, we thought we did a while ago.
Yes.
You promised it, but I haven't seen anything.
The same company that, we just had a new public address system installed over at the turf field where the football team plays, the Papa Winter guys and/or AYF. And that same vendor is working up a quote for this, so that we can get comparative quotes and get this done. We want a nice new system for the reorg.
It doesn't work too good during the planning board meetings either, so you don't feel slighted.
We could always take the money from Clean Communities.
All right, yes.
Now that Mr. Callahan brought that up, I thought we were going to put some monitors up here for Planning Board and Board of Adjustments, where when they do bring plans of whatever that the audience could see, and the attorneys and the architects could do a PowerPoint, or even if you've had something going here, you know, maybe put a widescreen on each side.
That's a good idea.
Because I know right on the Planning Board or Board of Adjustments, you sit there and you don't know.
To the engineer about what format might make the most sense for somebody bringing plans that way. I assume, my recollection is still the overhead projector, so I imagine there's some more modern projector device or something to be able to use or write to a monitor.
You do come to a meeting, and you can look up and see what they're talking about.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, seeing now we have a motion to close public portions?
No.
And a second?
Second.
Rock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Resolution number 19, day 451, day R, regarding closed session. Whereas we are about to discuss matters...
Those which deal with one or more of the statutory exceptions under the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, which allows the exclusion of the public during said discussion, and whereas the matters to be discussed relate to attorney-client privilege. Whereas this may be disclosed to the public at a time when the necessity for confidentiality no longer exists, or within six months or less from the date thereof. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council, Township of Berkeley County, of Ocean State of New Jersey, as follows. One, that the Township Council shall retire into executive session, where the public shall be excluded, and where said matters shall be discussed and formal action may be taken with regard thereto. Two, that the minutes of this executive session shall be closed for public inspection, and shall so remain until the reason for confidentiality ceases to exist or upon formal action by the Township Council and official meeting. Three, that the termination of said executive session, the meeting would be adjourned. Motion?
May I get a motion approved?
Judy, may I have a second?
Second, and rock.
Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gingrich?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Bushia?
Yes.
Council President Bruce?